....................................
..............................
...... No, it's gone. I can't see the bills so I can't really...
Do you want to look at mine?
Well, I saw the OEC one.
Any questions? How many motion to approve? The motion to approve, is there a second?
One second.
Is there a second? Any other discussion? Any questions? Look all right.
...
Nothing. All ordinary. Roll call.
Hypon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Eisler?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Financial reports, we're good.
If you look on the... On the liability report, there is... Item that is on the in the red, the liability report. On page seven. You'll see the paperwork deductions is in the red. It's not due to our medical independent spending. We advance that so nobody has to wait for their medical spending checks to come back. So just so you know, by the end of the year it will be...
What page?
No.
Seven.
Page seven. We advance two months so... And everybody understands what medical independent spending is. Independent spending is month by month, but the medical spending, they can bankrupt their account right away. Like if they put 2,500 in a year, they can use that in general.
I'll put that one again.
So that's why we have to advance, so nobody has to wait for their checks. And at the end of the year it'll be settled. So, other than that, everything is where it should be.
Any questions?
Is that where your bills look okay?
Yeah, there's one more I need to bring up later, but we'll need a motion.
Okay.
Any other questions? Motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
The motion and the second.
We already did that.
Did we have a motion?
Approve.
We had a motion?
Yep.
Yeah, we got one.
Oh, did you? I didn't hear about it. I heard of the bills.
We did on the bills, but not the financials.
Open on financials.
Oh, financials, okay.
Yeah, this is a financials.
So here we move into approval.
Move to approve the financials.
Okay.
Mark?
Mark's second.
And we're done.
Now we're ready.
We're good?
Ready for roll call.
Roll call.
Eisler?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Hypon?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Treasury checks. Anything on the bill?
Motion to approve.
The motion to approve the Treasury checks, is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Olson?
Aye.
Hypon?
Aye.
Eisler?
Aye.
Hearn?
Aye.
Approve agenda? Good to know, kind of a new one today, but...
You got a new one, sorry?
No, I didn't. I'm sorry.
I'll move to approve the agenda.
The motion to approve the agenda, is there a second?
Second.
Second. All favors say aye.
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 All opposed, motion carried. Visitors and delegation. Anybody want to address the question? Say without moving to... Roger?
Yeah, I put in for this year's budget to pay a list on the parking lot for the kid in pretty sad shape. And Kevin drew us up some specs and I guess what we're just asking is approval to go ahead, put advertising out for bids for the resurface and do a little bit of milling in the parking lot.
How much did you budget for it?
Seventy-five thousand.
Did you budget for that?
We hope so. Could cover it.
You think that should cover it?
Pardon? I hope so. Now Kevin...
I think so. I ran the numbers again after I did the specs and we should be well under that. It's going to meet the bidding threshold also, so we need to advertise for it.
How much did we advertise for bids?
A second.
The motion and the second to advertise for bids on the parking lot, maybe? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Any else, Roger? That's good, huh? Stacy?
Good morning.
How you doing?
Good here. The Veteran Service Office, we had the highest number of veterans we've seen since I've been here. Eighty-two veterans in April came in the office. And as far as other business goes, the clinic is still busy. Fargo has set a goal of 800 by the end of the year as registered veterans using the clinic. And as of April, we are nearing 400. So it's a good likelihood they'll make their goal for the end of the year.
Things are going well at the clinic?
Very well. In fact, I made use of it first week of April where I was number three, 26.
Nobody wants to go to the clinic.
We had other issues, so we had to take care of stuff, so...
Didn't you say you needed those numbers to go up any?
Yeah, I needed those numbers up. So if you know a veteran who's not here, seen here, by the clinic, send them up there.
Any else?
That's all I got.
Thank you. Jerry, travel request.
Yeah, the annual training session for NAPRO, it's the Lebanon State Region, is in Wisconsin Delta District. So I'd just like to make a request to travel to Wisconsin Delta to attend the training.
When is that?
Fourteenth through seventeenth.
You got it in your budget to go?
Yeah. I've been going to either this or the International Meeting this year. I think there's better training. There's actually training on wetlands and wetlands valuation and lake shore valuation at this one this year, so... Sometimes the training isn't all pertinent, but I think this year, a lot of this.
What's the cost?
If... If... I haven't gotten hotel rooms or anything, but... I guess I really don't even know.
Neighborhood? You got a neighborhood?
Well, probably around a thousand.
How much to approve you attending that?
The motion to approve the travel to...
I'll say...
... Cheese Land, is there a second? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Anything else right now?
Well, the other thing would be the assessor training bill that got passed, you know, that had a big effect on us. It got passed that the local assessors will need an 80-hour training within two years of appointment. So it's going to force the local assessors, the township and small city assessors to attend training for 80 hours. And I know that's not very popular with my... I've heard from some of them already, but the legislation did pass that.
Do they have to start fresh now to get their 80 hours or what they've got accumulate?
I don't think it... What they've got so far doesn't apply.
They got to go for 20?
We're not sure.
Well, they specifically say the training that's involved and the training that the assessors have been through is a 24-hour... They actually have challenged and passed a test. So they haven't had the 30 hours of... They're all 30-hour classes. So they haven't had any of the classes that are required.
And you do this online, right?
I think they're going to... Right now there isn't any online, but I think they're going to make one online class. It's up to the state tax department. You know, they'll have to try and...
They'll have to...
Follow the law now.
Nobody knows the guidelines, right?
Not yet.
We're just guessing.
Well, the law was passed, so the hours are there. I don't think they have everything lined up as far as how they're going to get them certified.
But sometime in the next two years they'll have to be certified.
Yeah.
Well, they headed up 180 hours, they brought it down to 80.
Yeah, they just split the hours in half.
Or 160 hours and took it down to 80.
Anything else?
That's it.
Christian?
Good morning. A couple things. I'm working on submitting a new Homeland Security grant. I had been in contact with all of the different virtue line agencies and there's a need for one to two more new sirens. I'm also continuing work on our multi-hazard mitigation plan. We'll have the next in-person SEDOM meeting this month. The date is to be determined, and I will let you know on that. Also, there's a type in some counties that put out a burn ban, for example, April 1st through October 1st. Only when the fire index rating is listed at high, very high, extreme, or when we're in a red flag warning. I thought I would bring it to your attention to maybe that is something Ramsey County wants to look into. That way, we don't ever have to... You know, it's a off week, we don't have meetings. You know, it's hard to say all five of you need to get together because we have to formalize the paperwork for the burn ban. Maybe that's something we can set, make a motion to pass for, you know, future years to come and that's how it will always be set in motion. That way, we won't have to rush together to get together.
That would make sense. Because when county passes an ordinance or sets a burn ban, you've got to have notice, you've got to have official meetings. So rather than waiting for two weeks for that to happen, that's sort of a resolution we're going to play. In talking with Lee Gessler with Rural Fire, there's some other issues we've got to deal with because, you know, I don't know... Listening myself, if you don't get the paper and you don't listen to the radio, you don't know when that red flag comes up. So I think we need to probably do some more work too, because that's going to... What I would anticipate if we ever prosecute anybody for violating the burn ban is lack of notice. That's the first thing the defense is going to bring up, so... Two things. One, this is a good idea, I think. Number two, I think we... And not just Ramsey, but I think the whole state needs to do a better job of getting the word out when there is a red flag warning.
I tried to push it out through all media sources, but it doesn't hit everybody.
Is it on our website?
I put it on the website, I put it out in the paper, in the news, TV news, on the radio, social media, our Facebook web page, but it doesn't hit everybody.
We could use the alert, doesn't 911?
They don't want to use the code right for first 911, and the only reason why is they only have a certain amount of minutes. And if they use them all up, then they have none for a real in-case emergency. Because I did talk to Star about that.
That might be an option, and we might have to use though, because it isn't going to happen that often. And when it does, those go right to cell phones and stuff.
That's true, but the fire index rating can change on a day-to-day basis, so you'd have to send it out four times a week. And that's not very feasible for that alert system.
Question for you. I was just looking at the burn ban across the state and Ramsey County is pink, but the rest of the state is red. So we're not in a burn ban right now?
Um, which map are you looking at for that?
Uh, I don't know.
I know, I know, no.
No, I'm not looking at it right now.
Oh, you're not looking at it?
No, we're looking at it. Ronnie?
If you looked at the television this morning, Ramsey County is in the red zone this morning.
They are this morning?
Yeah.
They switch it back.
Yeah, I said, it switches on a day-to-day basis.
One day this week Ramsey was the only one who saw that too. And I'm like, so... Have you got more rain than anybody else?
It's a lake.
We're waiting until the rains.
Yeah, it's a lake. They don't have much to convert it.
It varies. I just, I think that might be a good way to go, you know, to put us in that, you know, timeframe for the year. And then it's all set each year from year to year, April to October. I think that would be a great timeframe, April 1st to October 1st, each year.
In order to make sure we don't have trouble with the notice we were speaking of, do we have to develop a formal plan? And so we know exactly how we're supposed to notice people every time that it changes?
I can't imagine that we're the only place that has issues with this, because...
It's a statewide issue trying to get the notification out. We as emergency managers do our best to push it out through every, you know, news source, media source that we can, you know, word of mouth. I have pamphlets and other brochures out of my office. You know, I put them out at local businesses, you know, things of different natures. Some people are great about getting the information, some people get the information, don't listen. Just varies.
Oh, listen?
Sometimes, not all the time.
There were a lot of burning going on yesterday.
There's yours. So...
That's one like Bill just said, a lot of burning, it's an abnormal year of burning, because...
Well, our nightclub opened on... And I sympathize with that, I do. I just don't want, you know...
Exactly.
You know, Jones's House to go up in flames because they wanted to burn that itch.
Well...
You know, I sympathize with that too.
A lot of new poles sitting in ditches and stuff today.
Yeah, there are.
They burned a whole up.
So if you want to make a motion to pass that, I will get the documents signed up or typed up and then bring that to sign-in.
Anything else to add there? I think it's a good idea to put something in play. Is there any other counties doing this?
Yes. Don't ask me which one. I can't think of one off the top of my head. I could get you a comprehensive list though. I know quite a few states out in the western part do.
Yeah, but that's a different deal out there.
A burn ban is a burn ban.
Not a lot of black people out there.
There's some in the eastern part, there's some in the central, I just don't know.
Let's see what Governor Nelson doing on Nelson. Let's see what they're doing.
I don't know if they've done...
Can you follow up?
I can, absolutely.
Let's do that.
Before we get it together, sure.
We'll soon be out of the woods for this spring, I think, with everything turned green.
Hopefully soon, yes.
Block after night, tomorrow.
After tonight, yeah.
Right out.
Go support.
Hopefully not. So we've got time to work on it.
Yeah, I think it would be something to put in place for next year. The season's kind of already hit us and been hurt, but... And the only other thing I have is I have a meeting coming up on the morning of May 19th. It is from a couple individuals from the State Water Commission and one from Funeral Region 8. All regarding with the National Flood Insurance Program. If you would like to attend, you're absolutely more than welcome. Like I said, it's May 19th, that's a Tuesday, from 8:30 to 10:30 in my office. I can send out an email as a reminder as well, for those of you that check email. It is with, like I said, the state coordinator and the assistant state coordinator for the NFIP program. And then Barf Fitzpatrick from Funeral Region 8, who also works with that program. Just to kind of, I guess, talk over everything, see how it, you know, goes. It had been mentioned to me, you know, the role of a floodplain administrator. After a permit is issued, also needs to go do site and building inspections after it's been done. I don't have those qualifications to do a building inspect. I can look at a building and say, that looks good, it's a building. But I can't tell you many formalities of how to go about looking at it and what I'm supposed to be looking at.
Okay, did we send out a notice to the townships?
I did.
I mean, now what's this supposed to do again?
This was, it was just a notification saying that when, before you build or when you're getting ready to think about building, make sure to, you know, call in ahead of time. That way, we can arrange a permit to go up to that homeowner that's building, whether it be residential or non-residential, construction, a home, a shop, a brand, and putting up anything to make sure there is a proper elevation.
But the townships that are zoring and planning themselves, which most every township has, right?
No, I, when I talked to the State Water Commission, they had advised to send it out to all townships in the whole...
Talked to the State Water Commission?
Yep, for the NFIP program, National Flood Insurance Program. That's why that letter was sent, for the notification purposes. Because it's one of those things that's set in place, but it's kind of went by the wayside or people didn't remember or forgotten or needed that reminder. That's why.
And it only makes sense, because, you know, nobody wants to put a garage up and then find out that they have to move it.
Right, and I don't want to have to do that to anybody.
Well, it's, you know, it got done many times.
Well, and I'm sure it did, but I would rather people follow, you know, ABC steps than have to, you know, start a C and then...
Everybody follows step, but they didn't know what happened, and if it happened, people would better do anything.
And that's the point of the letter. That was the point of the letter.
Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Thank you.
I think I talked enough.
Bill?
Morning. Just a reminder, June 13th for a show, June 24th and 5th, live talk show. We recently received notice from the state veterinarian that we will not be having a folkery show this year until further notice. So this really could extend into next year as well. Not, don't know that, but until further notice kind of signifies that. So become to our shows and you see no folkery, that's what's up. Just another FYI, I think I told you once, but July 10th, I'm taking a two-week vacation. My wife and I are going to Alaska. So we'll be gone July 10th through the 24th. I can't wait to get up and see what Alaska's about. Horticulture world, as Mark knows, is crazy right now. Questions are coming in. And out in the farming world, small grains are basically done. We got some that are still got some left. Corn will probably be completed maybe this week if it doesn't rain, which if you talk to some, they like some rain. If you talk to a bunch more, they'd rather not have rain. We got some real problems out in the field, especially to the east and north of Devil's Lake with bogs now showing up, frost boils. A lot of people being stuck, as Adam would know and Ed would know. It's been a challenge. As dry as it's some seem, it's been a challenge. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Questions for Bill? Is it kind of an enjoyable spring? Is that what you call it?
People I talked to are just, they put it, it's relaxing, the farmers, because they don't feel...
You can't say that. You don't go that far.
No, but they say, as you know, the last 20 years, we've been starting in the field in middle of May or 1st of June. And times will get, you know, time is of the essence. Well, now that guy's telling me they're done planting corn and they haven't started yet in the last 20 years. So they figure they got time.
I also want to commend you on the shooting program again. I saw the, I saw the results of the state meet and I think top 10 had eight of the top 10 were from the Devil's Lake Public Schools. So I see that as a direct reflection on you in that program. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up, I thank you. But you need to go by the archery range on the west side, Ed's Bay Shop, Tuesdays and Friday nights and see all the kids out there. Oh my.
Pretty cool.
It's really cool. Yep, and we also got a shotgun team going to the nationals. They'll be going out on June 18th, I believe the day is. And we got a team going next year. We had three kids from our air rifle program that selected to participate in the Junior National Olympic Trials. The first day they were in qualifying range, the second day they must have stayed up late or something because they didn't shoot so good. But they got it and they did very well. So thank you. We got a good program going if we can keep it that way.
Money's all there.
We're working on it. Thank you.
Good on that ADI equipment in the armory. Could you comment on what we need there and what we should do there?
I cannot comment on what we need because I am not a tech person. I will tell you that Fargo's got some money, however, I got an email yesterday from Chris Borbulus, the extension director, that there are some funds available that have not been used up yet, up to $5,000. And our best society program has pledged $2,000 towards the program, as Elizabeth knows. But this thing now with the $5,000, that would be a system if that's in place, that extension would handle putting that in. That they would take care of the ordering and I also have a price sheet with that. I can't share that with you because I haven't got that permission yet, but I'm going to ask that when I get done here and I'll give it to Elizabeth. But yeah, they had a bid as of January 1st from ADI that was significantly less than what the one that we got here. So I don't, I'm not a tech person. I can't answer.
Steve, you been involved enough?
He's been on since...
I just got the signal.
And so what we're asking is just the board to table it until the next meeting, so we can wait for Chris's information and get together with Steve since he got back.
Okay, you want to table that up?
Yeah, I think maybe.
Hey, I'll make a motion. Got a motion and second to table the ADI equipment with the armory, so do we have more information?
I will try to get that to the ADI yet today that I have.
Also, there's some questions from social services that we'd like to get answered first, so...
Okay, any other questions? All favors say aye.
Aye.
Something else, Bill?
Thank you.
How much rain do you get?
Depends on who you talk to.
What's on board, Stan?
I don't know, I don't talk about rain, but you know what, after warm grass and seeing things around, watching floaters run down the fields, an inch of rain would be, wouldn't hurt nothing, if we can only get an inch. We'll need four or five.
Okay, very good. Well, hope for the best.
Thank you.
Thank you. Water board did not need today. Kevin, let's jump into you.
All right. If you guys don't mind, we can start with the mag water in North Creek Township. I did talk to them again about cost sharing on that and they're not at all interested. They're afraid that they start doing one road, that they're going to end up doing a whole bunch more, so... I don't know if I'll be able to persuade them to change their mind.
This is the terminal road, you know?
Yep.
This is the one we've had all the time, right? County's had?
Yep.
It's about, what, three quarters of a mile?
Yep.
It's going to be a major artery next summer when they do the underpass?
There'll definitely be more traffic on it.
Probably, yeah. I would say, yeah.
I'd like to get that road back to the county.
I think that for the time being, we should keep it as well. I, you know, maybe we can revisit it once that overpass gets done and we're done with the terminal road or the truck road. But I think as far as this year and possibly the next two years go, we just can't give it up because we know North Creek will do nothing of it. And I just can't see doing that when it's going to be, have that much traffic on it. What is the traffic count for the day now?
I don't have...
220 they had last.
And when do you, when do you do the traffic count?
This one, the one in 2014 was done on the 4th of July weekend.
That's not getting fair, it's actually...
Yeah, 4th of July.
This school year or something like that, you know, ball games, football games, basketball games, all those people are all on that road.
When I had a couple comments from people living out there and I use that figure, 220, and it just, it's been only way more than that yet. So whether like March 1st, during the school year, whatever, you know, who knows what time it's, you're going to get the highest count.
All right, they could go the other way, yeah. Take a week.
But I agree with these two that we should have, definitely take care of that road for the time being and the weekend. Have that in shape for that traffic next summer. It's going to load to a lot of traffic through that road.
So you're talking about just putting the mag water on it, is that what you're saying, or...
Oh, I think we should take it back. Can you look at some other roads you could give them instead there? Are there any other roads out there that you could give back to them that would be less travel? Because I just, I just can't imagine the townships doing proper justice to that road with what's coming. Because I just, I just can't imagine the townships doing proper justice to that road, um, with what's coming.
What is, what's the road people think out of?
What's, how exact, we had it before, how did we?
Traded for that.
We traded them for the truck road.
When did we trade them?
They.
Last year.
Last, yeah, last year.
Last year.
So we traded, we traded them back so we could take the truck road and do the upgrades on that then?
Truck road and the airport road, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't understand, Kevin, exactly when that happened either, but, uh, can you upgrade on that a little bit?
We talked about it at our last perimeter road meeting, and it's not, hasn't been officially done, but, uh, we discussed it in the meeting. Made everybody aware of what was gonna happen.
Was that later in the meeting, because I don't remember the conversation. I, I had to leave, I had to leave. I don't remember either very well, Bill, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
I knew there was some talk about trading, I did seventy Pacifics, and one, was it a meeting last year?
Yeah, it was, it was last.
Lots more.
Yeah, it was last fall. But, uh, yeah, I, I don't remember talking about it, but if we haven't officially done it yet, and, you know, then we could probably get away with it, but I, I would have to agree with you that if we start taking all the roads that are supposed to be township responsibility, everybody's, you know, there's a lot more around them.
I, I guess my concern is that, that we'll let the township take over, and nothing will happen on it for X number of years, and then we're gonna get stuck trying to get it back into shape again, and I, I just, I just can't see dealing with that, because you know, if you're gonna have four hundred or more vehicles on a road in a day, and you're not gonna do any, and you're gonna blade it, what, six times a year?
They paid for twelve, but we'll blade it as often as needs it.
Right, but I, but you see what I'm saying there? I just, I just think we're setting ourselves up for a, a problem in the future.
They're really fighting the chemical, I imagine, that bill, that would, you would guess.
The May, they're really fighting that.
Well, if, you know, and you can see their point, if they go along with that road, you're gonna have all these other requests, you know, so. I guess for everybody's best interest, let's just keep it in the county for now, and, and deal with it on a later date.
Kevin, can we revisit it after we get some of this work done?
I think that's maybe why some of the township representatives are here.
We have, I'm on, Barry and I are both on the South Creel board, we have several roads that handle eight hundred cars a day. I mean, and it's just gonna be, I mean, I don't know at what point, my always question was, at what point does, is there enough traffic? That it becomes warrants, that it, the county becomes involved?
Are you using the chemical now?
Uh, some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing more, uh, yeah. Um, it does help, but it's, it's not, you know, it's not perfect.
Are you making local, you know, landowners pay part of it?
Well, yeah, when it's in a private area, we are, we're actually spending, I think this year, close to somewhere around
Thirty thousand?
Thirty grand.
Really?
On it, I know that on a stretch, what, what we, what we would call South Walley Drive, uh, you know, down there, that road, that's one that you, that's about eight hundred when we do the counts. And, you know, gravel road with eight hundred cars a day, rain or shine, it just can't handle it, you know? People come in to meetings with pails full of, what, this is supposed to be gravel, and I'm like, well, when you drive over it eight hundred times a day, you know, you start talking twenty-five thousand cars a month. So, I don't, I guess, um, you know, we start talking about, uh, here, you talk about roads that got two, three hundred on them, we're, we're definitely gonna be in the same shape, that we're, we're gonna need some help, but it's just gonna be unfeasible for, I don't see how in the future we can keep this.
What other roads did you have out there that kept on the traffic?
Yep, the other one that you wanted to share with, with Poplar Grove, that one goes to the coal. That one's paved, but that road, that road is just, um, I got another estimate just to fix the potholes, and it, this year's another thirty grand. Just, you know, if you've been out it, you'll see there's little cuts everywhere, it just, but there's no, I mean, when that road was built, it was, or paved, I should say, you know, it was just a matter of the locals got together, threw some pavement on it, and it worked good, and that was twenty years ago. Now, it's, there's no, I mean, there wasn't fabric down or anything like that, to my understanding, so, it's just falling apart. And I don't know how, how we're gonna keep, be able to keep going, and just, uh, we're not, we're not gonna have the resources to keep all these roads up, if we have to spend as much over here. So I wanted to bring that to your attention, then.
I think it'd be a good point to bring to the perimeter road committee, instances like that, you know, there's things that benefit the city, benefit the county, and I think we should, uh, bring instances like that to the road committee, you know, because if it's bringing business to town, economic development in itself, right there, the road, I mean, the people gotta get to work, they gotta get to shopping, or whatever. I think we should be able to address it some way, you know, that we could set money aside for certain things like that, and take care of it. That every year we have the same problem, I mean, why not fix it, make everybody happier?
I agree.
Do we have any, obviously, we don't have a formal policy on what road we, I mean, traffic counts, anything like that, for what we should handle and what we shouldn't handle?
I don't believe we have any policy like that.
I mean, I, I guess that's, I agree with everything that's being said, I mean, you could try to run eight hundred cars over a gravel road a day, and hold up, I mean, for God's sake, just driving my truck, and then out of the farm, twenty times a day in the road, get beat dead, so, I, I just, from the policy standpoint, though, if you don't have some kind of a formal policy, or at least guidelines of what you wanna take over, what you don't wanna take over, you're gonna get everybody, and possible, coming in here saying, I want my road taken over, or funding match, or whatever, some of them are gonna be very legitimate, but it's just a matter of how do you determine which ones, you know, you can't pick winners and losers.
Right, yeah, I agree with you, yeah, now, we need to come up with some type of policy.
Yeah, I, yeah.
The city's been very, you know, helpful in its perimeter road, I mean, when we met, they come up with ideas, and like, draft, and, you know, which road is being used more than others, which ones we should probably try to take care of, and really, you've been to most of the meetings, so, you think that's the way to go, or?
They, they wouldn't, the ones that we're talking about here wouldn't qualify as perimeter roads, because they're not on that designation.
Correct.
But they're spinoffs from the perimeter road, and so if the perimeter roads need that much attention, you know, it's obvious that the ones that spin off them.
I don't know what you're talking about, I've, that's never been a good road, I've been going over for thirty something areas, but, geez, it's just, you know, washboard, and what's in that gap? What's too much black through from the washboard? Not enough plate?
Yeah, not enough plate.
It's gotten, it's gotten a lot better before we built it, yeah, yeah, they put it around the line, our road.
Oh, I've done it.
Oh, that's always been, that's always been.
Power on, power up, you know, brakes, power on, brakes on, is what that.
The answer there, though, is the traffic, I mean, eight hundred cars a day, it wouldn't matter if it was the best gravel ever made, it's just not gonna stop. Honestly, at that point, it needs paving or something. Talking about a truck.
Well, and it needs proper paving, not just, you know, like what we did for, look like what that was known as coal.
Yeah, and there's, there's a few roads out there, you know, especially obviously next to the lake, where they're getting just so much more traffic than they were initially planned to date. I mean, they're just gonna need to do something, we're gonna have to do something about it, but we need to have a plan on it, not how we attack it, I think.
You know, it's, you know, they're building a development here or there, there's a township road going to it, and that township ends up footing the bill.
Yeah.
You know, the present landowners, they pay the bill, because the road gets used more and.
It's getting fifty cars a day, and all of a sudden, it's getting four or five hundred cars a day, I mean, it's, it's the reason the road's just not gonna hold up.
I know my place used to be the end of the mail route, turned around there, now they're developing down there, which is fine, I mean, it's good they're beating, they're using it, but there's more stress on that township road, and it's four and a half miles down to the development, so. Who gets to take care of that bill, the townships, so. I think we need to come up with some type of plan in the county that will address some of these issues, surely can't get it done today, but.
That's gonna be a big hurdle, because you go on, uh, the road south of, uh, Edmore, I mean, you know, thinking, trying to think outside the box, there's gonna be lots of them. Little bit of two hundred car a day threshold.
That will, yeah. What are you guys, what are you guys levying for a township now?
It's seventeen. Is that the max?
Thirty-six, max, right?
They can go to eighteen, and then they go to the people in the township, then they go to thirty-six.
Thirty-six?
Yeah. Cause my, my township, I think, is the only one that's doing thirty-six right now.
You're doing thirty-six?
No, it is doing thirty-six.
I think Odessa's up, I'm not sure, they got an extra ten on, don't they?
But they paid that off, they got that paid off.
So they paid that off, okay, they took the ten mill off?
No, I think they still have it.
Those numbers are gonna come into play when we start looking at health and stuff like that, they'll be part of the formula that will, will, uh, gain help.
Have you guys looked at that extra ten mills, put it on?
I don't really guess, I haven't discussed that.
Would you get, you know, stoned or something if you did?
Well, probably not more than we do now, but, yeah, I guess, but, I mean, I, I just, I, I, I don't know off the top of my head how much more money that would be.
Barry pays a special assessment, or did pay a special assessment to get paid without at this point, so.
Um, what'd you get from the state this year?
The, the extra?
Yeah.
Fifty?
No, ten.
We got, we only got eight, because they parted it out. Eighty-six hundred or eighty-seven.
Benson, Benson County got part of it.
Yes, yeah.
I think, I think we should request it back, I'll buy a ski jump or someplace where it is.
The roads have to be above bar, but they do have some down there that they maintain, that go in six miles per hour.
Do you know if they allocated any for the townships next year? I know they did for us, but I don't think they did to the townships.
Yeah, I think it's probably good.
There's five thousand in the surgi in the top second run.
For the second run?
Yeah, I don't know if eleven seventy-six had anything for the townships, I don't know, I suppose it just has. Let me get the other script, two point one out of that one, please, it's a township.
I like it, I didn't. Just a second run.
Yeah, just a second run, surgery.
Um, you know, it's for that that terminal road, but it's not officially arguing, I have to make a motion to take it back, anything doing?
No.
No.
Well, no, cause we never had.
We'll sign the paperwork, something.
Okay, so let's just carry forward.
Then I, are you gonna approach the landlords again about the chemicals? Uh, I think everybody's ready to go out there.
I'll let them approach me.
Okay.
They, they seem to get a hold of me, so.
Cause I'm directing it that way.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll tell them to, to, because we like to do the whole thing as possible, isn't it?
Just a question from my, from my, from Lonnie, when it comes to who has what jurisdiction on what road, what kind of, what kind of legality is there to that kind of stuff, I mean?
It's, the question is whether, um, a, an, an entity decides to take that on as a road. Uh, generally, what you see is, uh, the state highway system may take on what they believe is their state highways, and, and if they don't uh, wanna leave it on, they'll just let it go, or turn back highway, and we've got several areas of that around the state, or on the county. If the county decides to put something on its county road system, then the county does that. If that, if the county takes something off the county road system and defaults back to the township under the section line law, and then it's up to the township to decide, based upon their finances and their policies, as to what they're going to keep and prove, and what they're not.
So we can decide to take over whatever we feel we wanna take over, as long as we are willing to do the upkeep and maintenance on it?
And along with that comes the responsibility to follow the various rules and regulations as far as your slopes and whatnot. That's what we're looking for.
Kevin, was that road determined a perimeter road? I don't think it was on the perimeter road designation, was it?
Yeah, it is.
It was?
No, it's, right now.
The terminal road is.
Yep.
Terminal road?
Apparently, so, shared fifty-fifty with the township, and they have never participated in it.
I think, uh, people in the township should petition the township board to, you know, so they hit it formally and write it. If they're not gonna do that, then, I mean, if you went to them, they said they didn't wanna do it, then I think the first thing to do would be have the people of the township petition the township. To see if they can get it done that way, unless we're gonna keep, but then we have to go ahead, and we have to see if the city's gonna be
Anexed, isn't it?
A part, participant or annexed, too, so, um, we've got some work to do on that.
Currently, the perimeter road agreement reads that any improvements are shared fifty-fifty with the township.
Yeah, so.
And they have never, we brought it with penal money, and they helped look to match, but other than that.
So that agreement's still there?
Yep, that's the current agreement.
Okay, that's what they're all applying, they don't have much road system left in that township. They really can't step.
Six miles, they gave up the truck belt and everything.
So, I mean, you got, you got a good case, they really can't step away from paying fifty percent of that.
No, not according to the agreement.
No? So we're really, the county's getting up for fifty percent, is that correct, Kevin?
Should be, yes.
Unless we get the city to throw in some more.
Yeah, the city is responsible on perimeter, but I guess we can ask, but, you know, if, if, another thing, if the city happens to annex an area, anything inside that area, we come to the city road. Now, you were asking about how it goes, yeah, taken on.
If they annex the road, do they then annex the home stoop? Is that how that goes? It's usually the land that, so.
Let's talk to Rachel, has this ever been brought up with the refinery, the access roads to the refinery?
Mm-hmm, their intention, what they'll be utilizing is the road right west of the property, it's the one that, um, runs north and south along the elevator, the west side of the elevator, and it'll be about a mile, and it's all that they'll utilize, and their intention is to pay it themselves.
No, west elevator or east elevator?
West.
That's the truck road, the truck road, yeah, right there.
They, their refinery plans to pave a mile to their property themselves.
It's like not grow, not quite a mile, but up to their entrance, right?
Yep, yep, cause they know that they're gonna have the truck traffic, and they don't want a dust storm for everybody around, and, I mean, it just makes sense.
That's all right for their trucks, but how about for their workers getting to the refinery, that they're gonna probably be using this road?
Yep, yep, and that's still, that's where they're gonna, they're gonna pave it on.
But we're talking about the, the, the terminal road now going up to where the, where the paving, or the fourteenth street.
Okay, on the, on the north side of their property you're talking about?
That's, no.
Where you don't pass it down school, and all the way out, because they're gonna have a lot of employees that are gonna take that route out to work, they're not gonna go out on highway two and then go up if they're in town here. Um, it's the nature of the beast, if I run Fourteenth Street, I'm not going out to highway two to, to get to the.
I think if it comes to that point, and the oil refinery people are using that road a lot, that I think the oil refinery would be fine with helping out.
They have, I will tell you this, they have never said, we will not do this on anything, they're on everything, it's, they want everything to be a collaboration, they wanna be a um, a good person like community, and, um, do what they have to do to make things right, they've never, ever walked away from anything so far, so, I have no, no, um, hard feeling thing that they're gonna, they would pull away from doing their portion, I don't think they will. At, at the end of the day, that's a drop in the bucket for their bill for the refinery, so.
Well, I think a good idea for the county is just to hang onto this road, treat it like we're treating it, you know, I think eventually it's gonna be a different deal, so.
Yeah.
I'm sure Rachel would agree with that.
Yeah, and they, they're more than accommodating, so, that could be something that we deal with once they're starting construction, and you actually have your counts, you're obviously gonna have your counts from the past to the counts when it's, there's a refinery there, so you'll have facts to say it's dealt with the traffic or what have you, please pay your portion.
Kevin, on the bass, we've just dealt with it as county, taking care of the big work, I don't know what it's hard, but we can, and all that.
Yep, we, we never even asked the township to help.
Did you ask the landlords, or did you ask the?
Yeah, they paid twenty-five percent, just like.
Everybody else.
Yep.
Okay, let's just carry on that way.
What's the, what's the overall cost here again, for three quarter mile, putting down the May water?
Five, six thousand.
All for it?
And that's total cost?
Total cost.
We look for a twenty-five percent split, we pay seventy-five.
Yes, that's right.
That makes sense.
Seven, five hundred bucks, four thousand bucks.
Four thousand dollars?
Yeah. It'll be a little bit longer this year, but, yeah, it won't go up much.
Well, I think we.
I think we're gonna have a permit fixed before the law.
Yeah, I think we'll have a permit fixed sooner rather than later, and just continue with it.
So if we don't have any agreement, you know, with the township to take that back? So if we don't have any agreement, you know, with the township to take that back, I guess we don't need a motion or anything to, just carry on the way we work. Okay? That's consensus.
We don't have an agreement for them to take over the six miles of truck route though either, so.
We don't?
The current agreement says they have to pay for six miles of bleeding. They don't do that.
Isn't the truck road a third, a third, a third, city, county, county's fair agreement?
Is the city paying a third?
Of improvements.
But not on maintenance?
They, they've bleated for three months with their machine, with their people.
Should be bleating it for four, if they're supposed to be in there.
The township bleated for six months.
The township, uh, the township's not making.
They don't do the snow removal.
No, they don't do snow removal. That's not part of the agreement.
Let's try to get this hammered out. Township's not paying for anything in that agreement right now? On this little truck road?
Not on their road.
Since we took it over as a federal aid road, they're out, they're out of danger.
I guess they got a little piece from Butler Machinery to where the dig starts, that's it.
Yeah.
Well, let's sit down with them, let's get a permit road, because this, I mean, this, this major changes in the perimeter road agreement that are gonna happen here, we need to get everybody on board, so we can get some road up and sign.
For the truck road?
Perimeter road.
By the perimeter road.
We need to get our perimeter roads committee together again and find out exactly where we're at with that.
Well, and that's where the South Cradle should come in too, then.
We just said, though, let's back up a minute here. We just said, Kevin, that the, uh, truck road, we have no agreement with the township on.
Yes, we do.
Oh, we do?
A third, a third, a third of the city, a third of county, and a third of township.
But we have no agreement since we took it over as a county, as a federal aid road.
That's right.
How are we getting this state money to do the building now if we don't have any agreement with the township?
They get their money through the state.
Federal aid road.
They do have an agreement with the state.
And then they agreed that they would take over the, oh, you can just.
Under what you just said previously, we don't need an agreement, do we? I mean, as the county sits, we're the highway.
We're taking, if, if, if the county adopts this as a county road, it's on our dime. In the past, the county didn't do that, they wanted a, an agreement with the city, the township, and the county in order to share some of the costs, because it was a fairly expensive proposition at the time. So that's how the agreement got in place.
Yeah. I guess I was just kind of under the assumption that since we were doing the upgrades on the truck road, we were taking the thing over, not calling it a county road as a.
I agree with that.
So per se, but it's a county road, essentially, no. I thought that's kind of my assumption, I guess.
I guess that's.
Well, and that was all before I was around here, so I kind of just assumed that's.
Have we relieved the township of any responsibility to the truck road?
Not really, no.
Should we?
Absolutely.
That's why I brought it to the last.
That's what I mean now, Ed, because then, the next step was, was that we took over that, so they were supposed to take total control over the south end.
Up, uh, over the fourteenth street.
And they're not doing that.
And they're not doing it either.
Then they're not doing that, so we need to get, we need to.
They're taking control, they're just not doing the standards that we had been previously doing.
Well, they have to do those. But should, let's have Lonnie tell us what you do now.
We need to get that right, yeah.
It's, uh, it's up to the county commission. If you wanna take over something and, and put it on your county road map, you can do that. If you want to try to get into an, an agreement with the township and the city to try to share some of the costs, you can do that too. It, it, it's your discretion as to what you take over as a county road.
So, when was this discussion had that the truck road was gonna get swapped for the frontage road on fourteenth? Last year?
That, like, that, I don't know.
That's what we're asking.
Yes, I know, but I'm saying it sounds as though everyone's had a consensus that that occurred at some point in time, but nobody can say when. And it was never put in writing.
I was at a meeting, but I didn't hear that, but I had a meeting about half hour.
I brought it up with the perimeter road meeting, yes. And I don't know who heard it or who didn't, but I, I can tell you Ray Strong knows about it. Because I was talking to him when I said it.
Yeah, so, uh, we need to renew that conversation and, uh, and get everything straightened out. Because we can't just take over six miles of road and then them agree to take over three quarters of a mile or a mile and then not do it.
At that point, we decided we were gonna have another meeting and.
We never did.
So we need to do that.
And you never did.
So let's, let's get that done, and let's get those together.
Let's get that done, but.
Yeah, the agreement has to be hammered out, yeah, make sure it's.
Let's table this.
Let's do that, let's do that, Bill, and then let's, let's get this chemical situation taken care of for this year.
As long as we're not, uh, not, you know, we haven't finalized any formal agreement that it's township road yet, but, you know, then that's the only way we can do it.
Just take the chemical thing over this year. Right, Bill?
Take the road for this year, I thought is what you want to do. Until you sit down.
We should, we should go back to our standard agreement and do what we were doing, if we, if that's what we wish to do, until we get that formally hammered out and signed.
So you just leave it the way it is? Is that right, Bill?
Well, we, we took over that road because of the, uh, federal aid designation, and then everybody just assumed that it was our road again. So at this stage of the game, we don't have a formal agreement with the city or the township that that part of our perimeter road system is solely our responsibility. And we need to finalize that, because that's a perimeter road.
I think you're talking about two different entities here, though. One, you're talking about the truck road, and the other one, you're talking about the fourteenth street road. And they're not the same thing. The agreement is not the same for the truck road as it is for the fourteenth street road.
They were all the same, they, they were all, heard about a road designation, they were all the same.
Yeah, it's all on one agreement, one big giant agreement, every.
But there are different, there are different.
Segments.
Segments, and what's being done on each, an inch of those two segments, and the rules are different on both of them.
Agreement is different.
The agreement is different for both of them.
Okay, okay, look, let's just take care of the fourteenth street, and we'll take care of the, uh, truck road at our perimeter road.
Perimeter road, yeah.
Let's just leave fourteen street alone this year, and continue on the way the county's been doing with that road for now. Because Rachel, that pretty much guaranteed us.
I choose my words wisely, consider.
Let's do that, because that's all right with everybody. We need a motion to that effect?
So everything that, no? Everything that qualifies by our third participation qualifies as a coming participation in the.
And it won't. And it won't be exactly a third.
If we have third, third, third designation.
Well, the township has already refused to pay for their third on the mag water.
It would be, on the, on that terminal road, the agreement is that all improvements are shared fifty fifty with the township and the county, the city's on it, on that road.
But the township has never done that.
Right.
If the township's never done that, why do you expect they're gonna jump and do it now?
Well, that's my point, is, well, if we have a percentage of, of responsibility on that road, then it qualifies for the mag water.
Are we really fighting over two thousand dollars? I mean, are we really hating over two thousand dollars that is due from the, that is due from the township on this, and we're spending twenty minutes on?
We're, we're discussing, we're discussing what's fair.
I, I realize that it's fair, but let's just put the mag water on for the year, ask the homeowners to pay their twenty-five percent and be done with it. That's what we did last year, nothing, there was no pooh-ha about it last year, let's leave it alone for this year. You guys get your perimeter road stuff, uh, hashed out when you have your meeting, and we'll vote from there.
Make a motion then.
I just did. What was your motion? That we put the, that we put the mag water on the fourteenth street road with a twenty-five percent match for the homeowners along the way as we get in two thousand fourteen.
And thirteen.
And thirteen. And get a perimeter road meeting put together.
Kate?
On the issue.
I'll second that. Second, motion in the second, familiar discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
All pros, motion carried.
Okay, Kevin, carry on.
All right, we'll start the path, then Ramsey County, ten, our pro, our road projects, um, I'll let Paul talk something out.
They have, I guess, there's still twenty and a half days left, with the, they hauled out once the copper dam materials left outside the rig trap in the lake, uh, lake's gone down quite a bit since last year, especially up there, um, so it don't take a while to get, they'd take a lot more material out to get it below the water level for those required, so. That, I think that's basically wrapping up, and then, uh, and then the little bit that's come off, and the frost out of the ground, and they'll finish up the project. Hopefully, they'll finish that on time. Then, basically, I want the truck road phase one. I guess we've got the road state, um, through both phases, up to, from, starting at the north side of tracks, going around the curve, all the way out to highway twenty. And then again, that one is after the little bits come off on highway twenty north of US two, where they can start. Uh, so our truck road, well, then we got a proposal from Close Construction, uh, she was met out at the site last week, and they wanna close the road, eliminate all two hundred thousand dollars, and flinging a pilot car, I guess we talked about that at the last commission meeting.
Greg wasn't able to make the meeting, so. He, he put this, uh, proposal together, I think that's not copy durable.
So, um. And I guess we checked the variety tubes, and I guess they didn't have any issues with us doing that. I don't, we set up the project, and we admitted that it was supposed to stay open. We, and I think we were a bit concerned that the, the underpass project in town here was gonna be pushed up and go through earlier. But since there's not gonna be a conflict with that now, I guess I don't see a big issue with closing the road. I would, you know, excited the project a bit. He doesn't, in the letter, he doesn't say that he's gonna get the time back, but basically, the, the time savings that he's giving would be to complete the change order section, you know, from the curve south to the north side of tracks. Um, but he can get that done within, well, two weeks of his current completion date, which is still getting everything done this year.
So that's a good deal for us.
What's, what's the total cost of over docked here in one?
About eighty-one, eighty-two hundred?
Nine, nine hundred and seventy thousand.
How much?
Ninety-seven, I think, and then the.
And it save us two hundred off of that?
Uh, no, part of that's on the change order part, in words, estimating of the change order portion of it. We had six hundred thousand, including, you know, the right away and engineering and everything. Um, so it's off of the total, so off of one point six million, save two hundred thousand. But then, I guess, the other part of that proposal was that Greg wanted to put that back in the gravel to go on the road now. So there'd be a total of ten inches of gravel on the entire corridor.
If you look at the original plan, the savings would be one hundred and thirty thousand, something like that, on the pilot car and the flinging.
Yeah, and he said.
Oh, that's, uh, no, that was, that was closer to. Well, it's two hundred thousand total if you use the, the total project cost without the change order.
Original project.
Goes to the phase two, but the phase one cost would be a hundred and thirty thousand off the original.
Right.
Advice.
Yeah.
And he made it, when we wrote it, the truck road last week, he, uh, said that it would, and obviously, it's gonna expedite the process. And he can make, you know, doing all the cuts through the hills and everything, he said, it's just way easier, which stands for reason.
Well, we did some similar work, I guess it was a much bigger cut, uh, on projects over the years, um, two thousand twelve, and they had to move, shift alignment over back and forth three times to get down to the bottom of that cut. This one's probably quite a bit less than that, but that's a lot of temporary surface waste and waste in that area too, so. For, uh, part of the cost savings in that proposal is not using gravel, it's gonna be wasted.
They worked it all up on then, so.
Yeah, and this gives you another.
Another two inches of gravel.
Two inches of gravel total.
Have you spoken with the landlords in the area about building the road?
He has. I guess Close, Close has, um, two, the three landlords on the east end, I don't know if, if he's talked to all the farmers along the way. And I don't know if it's gonna affect, they would have to have some, I think they're gonna have to leave the approach to Strata, the south end open, up to, at least up to Strata, they can have it all closed with the traffic, and we just have left Strata track it through.
He did say that he would accommodate farmers or whoever had, absolutely had to get through there.
And, uh, he's gonna work with east end first, and, uh, make sure that that gets finished up, so those guys have.
He said he'd basically do it in two sections, he'd do the east restaurant and then the curve south, and he had it with separates, that way he could get it, so that there'd always be a way in and out, basically. He'd be able to accommodate, he said he visited the homeowners, and everyone was fine with it.
And we did check with Brown Pukes about adding additional two gravel, uh, two inches of gravel, and he was fine with it, so.
So do we need a motion to, um, close the roadway?
Yes, we will.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion to close the truck road.
We're gonna add options season of local traffic, only local traffic, I guess.
So somehow we should, uh, agree to this, uh.
Just, that, that'd be the motion, would be to, uh, agree to the.
Yeah, and he said, I think he stated that that's his estimate, it's not gonna be exactly that number, but it's gonna be in that.
Really close.
So that's gonna be close.
One other question. For, what's the dates on that, from the day would it be done then?
The original was October seventeen. And he said an additional, he's estimating additional in two weeks, with the added work.
Somewhere like October first.
And he's, he said if it, when we're out there, it was a really nice day last week, he said if it stayed that way, you go, that might be looking for work on the first of October, it's a nice, so.
He's working on the great days that we've seen in the past, so.
His estimate is.
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. Any other discussion? All favors say aye?
Aye.
So any other questions or issues on truck road, phase one, that basically?
I mean, I guess I could update on the right of way.
Oh, on my face too?
Yeah, but just those four parcels there, uh, Cory Kenner, Steph Thompson, I'm at them at the site. Um, I think it was trading for last meeting. And then, uh, it sounded like they had to put their stuff signed this week. Didn't have any, they addressed the concerns they had, uh, it is one of the property pens reset, with the new lines, with those lines to. Strata, I guess that's in terms of their tree roll, we're outside of that, but I might have to narrow that up a little bit more. Just got anything else from them today. And our plans, I think, they were supposed to be, they're bored, and hopefully, they'll get back to us today the next week.
Our plans is that, where they?
They're just north of Kenners and Dobbs and some of west side, I think.
Any other issues on the truck road?
Oh, and Close is supposed to get pricing back on the change order. Yeah, but they, this, that, the pricing depended a little bit on what we've just decided on that closure, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we'll get back to them this week too.
So eventually, we'll have to make motion to improve that change order too?
Yeah, so I don't know if we do that.
So, uh, hopefully next week.
This one gives information to go ahead and finalize those numbers.
Exactly, yeah. Okay, Ramsey County eight?
Yeah, I guess we got the plan basically done for that, um, to review the, um, snack book, go along with it, get that together, um. Yeah, I think the last thing, you already made a motion to advertise for this for that, so, to get that out in the next couple of weeks here.
Any questions on eight?
Yeah.
Ramsey nine is the last road project.
Uh, that one, we, uh, did the, finish the down survey last week, um, with the, the culvert replacements, just to make, and so we can do the hydro balance, just to see what, if the sizes of culverts are appropriate, the replacing, on one of them, that one's on a twenty-four inch. And then, uh, there's one that's on the structure inventory that's in a pretty tough shape. But, uh, but I guess we wanna make sure that we're putting the right size structure back in, it might be deeper, put a lot of sculper in, and then the, and then replace the pipes, but then, I guess there might be some other options that we're gonna have to.
How many pipes?
Three, one of them's a double.
Three locations.
Yeah, so four, four culverts total. Yeah, so four, four culverts total.
So that's a lot more than all of this.
Yeah, and watch to get involved of.
Well, are they going to, are they going to say anything about range with the box culvert as opposed to those pipes or? Roll that road.
Leave some space for them, just to cover that.
Now that's what we're reaching, what we're calculating.
Now, refreshing, we're on the east end of mine now?
Uh, yes.
Yes, okay.
From.
From four already, yes. From four.
Yep. Any other questions on nine? All right.
I think he has made motion already, that, but that's for that on that last eight too, so.
Yes, yes.
Okay, number two, um, we've got one female project, one big female project from two thousand thirteen. Need to advertise your bids, it's going to meet the bidding threshold, so make the motion go in. It's, uh, on Ramsey County Forest out the doine by the lake crossing there. So I need a motion to advertise for the bids.
Second. A motion and second advertiser bids on County Ford. What all this could entail?
There's a lot of, a lot of fill material and then rip route.
Said this is from twenty thirteen?
Twenty thirteen disaster, yes.
And it's going to be in areas that are not on the lake crossing, is that correct?
It's all on the lake.
It's all on the lake crossing.
Yeah. So it ends up a little bit wider, probably.
Really?
Yeah, not a lot, but enough so maybe they got guys in fish and. Need trucks at the same time. I don't know, we need two trucks, yeah.
Wow. That'd be a lot, Kevin.
We're going to try to do this.
This summer, yeah.
Okay, and you want to let bid, so.
Yeah, we're just advertising for bids on, well, we're already, no awarding bids or anything yet.
And we've got the budget for fifteen percent match, so.
Any other discussion? All favors say aye.
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 Motion carries.
And then hospital eleven seventy-six, uh, um, does everybody up to speed on that or should we bring up the speed or? That's another pile of money that the state's giving us, but we can't get it till twenty sixteen. So we need to probably think about what project we want to do with that. I don't know if anybody's got any ideas, I don't know where we'll be on Ramsey nine, we're still putting numbers together on that one, so.
I guess with what we submitted to the state for that project, we can figure it on the high side. And we figured it's going to be about a shortfall of about one point two million from, so I go twenty-one oh three. And figuring replacing those structures as they, as they were, it was two separate ones that a box culvert, it might be cheaper. About a hundred thousand to put a box in instead of two culvert, large culverts like that. And then this, uh, hospital eleven seventy-six, um, provides two point one million. So you have about nine hundred thousand left over after we finish Ramsey nine.
So bottom line, we'll need a project for about.
Nine hundred thousand.
And, uh, as far as other temple projects, it roughed out, uh, paving the truck road was about two point eight million. From the north side of tracks all the way around. Of that, um, say if you started at the south end of the curve for the part that the, if I agree, who's talking about doing, that part would be about a half million and the county part would be about two point three if we go all the way through the curve.
And a truck road.
Right.
That's, we just give it up for numbers, not, not trying to put thoughts in there, and this is for two thousand sixteen.
Right, right, and that's, so that's, you know, we've got nine hundred thousand left of the two point one after Ramsey nine. And that would cost two point three million, so I mean, that's, you know, quite a bit, one point four shores.
Otherwise, if we go to our, uh, our road plan, the next project on our road plan is Ramsey County eight from Webster going east.
Resurface.
Yep, yep.
Culverts are all ready.
Culverts, okay, we would check them, but. And we've got some time to work on that, just, just be thinking.
What money comes out of eleven seventy-six next year? Is there money that's designated that only comes out next year then?
Next year.
It's all available. It's all available right now?
Nope, in sixteen.
In sixteen.
February first to sixteen is when it's.
When it's available.
When they can get it to us.
We can start the engineering, July or something like that, so.
Up this year, right?
Yeah, right first of this year.
We have some time to.
We do.
Mega.
We do, we don't need a decision today, yeah.
And the other catch on that one was if, say if you spent ahead, um, it's only that we have to get in the first six to sixteen for construction.
So bottom line is if, say for instance Ramsey nine, if we wanted to try and finish our project and spend ahead, we couldn't do it till, what's it?
January first to sixteen, that's what I read in the bill.
So does that make sense? We can't get this money, we can't start any work to get this money until January first, so we can't really finish Ramsey nine. And use this money. Does that make sense? Is there a better way to explain that?
So any work done or?
No, just, just that bottom line.
So we could use the remainder of twenty-one oh three on nine this year, doing like the culverts and then do the resurface next year and tap the money out of eleven seventy-six then?
Yep, right.
It's an option, yeah.
Yep.
Well, I don't think it's that.
Then we did phase that, probably in two phases, so that's an option.
We'll have to look at what our options are before, so I want to guess, getting ready for engineering.
I'll probably bring it up again at the next meeting, so. Just so we don't get late or behind.
Right, okay.
And then I have a few, couple of things to bring up, um, we got our last, is there any other questions on that hospital eleven seventy-six before we get off? Um, we got our last summer maintenance contract from Freshwater Township, so we need a motion to sign that.
We do. Let's take it, get a motion and say, I just blew the Freshwater Township contract. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, holders, motion carries. Go ahead.
And then last year, they finished the audit for the two thousand and ten Fima. And there's actually quite a bit of work that never got done, like the raise raises and degrow township where the roads are underwater and. So we need to pay them back about, how about it's three hundred and eighteen thousand five twenty-eight eighty-eight. So.
Pay the deal with that?
Yeah. They advanced us the money for those grave raises and they just never got done because they're still underwater today. And that was a fifteen percent match and that disaster also, that's why probably some straggle projects didn't get done either. And we got a balance in that account that's over, just over four thousand, so.
So we just have to give back whatever we need.
So we got the money you just never spent it basically, we just never bid the project.
So I'd like a motion to go ahead and make that reimbursement to, let's go to Department of Emergency Systems.
Have a motion. To pay that money back to the Fima the wrong way. Got a say?
Say.
Got a say? All favors say aye.
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 All holders, motion carries. Kevin, go ahead.
Last one, we're gonna overweight, over length, over width permit for just anticipating maybe what's going to happen with the refinery, um. I don't know if we want to continue to pursue this permitting process or whatever, it's kind of becoming a thing throughout the state, but once we get it developed and get your, all your guys' approval on it and everything, but I'm just curious if I should keep spending time on developing this overweight permit policy. It would be online, they could go online and it's a fillable permit and we could charge an X amount for overweights, over length, over width, side prints.
Andrew, would that be anywhere in the county then?
Anywhere in the county, yes.
Other companies doing this?
Uh, just, well, I shouldn't say everyone, but a lot of them are doing that, I guess.
The state has website that you go to and do that too, correct?
Yeah, we're not on the state one yet.
We should be able to come up with a boilerplate, um, agreement or whatever, permit for with, you know, for some of the other ones and, and get out of work with it.
Well, I got about, uh, ten or twelve different examples that I just reviewed yesterday, but.
What kind of money are you talking about for fees permitting this company?
Oh, for fees? It goes by, uh, increments fee overweight, but it starts at twenty dollars. If you're over eighty thousand, since our rules are eighty thousand, it starts at eighty thousand. The first ten thousand is a twenty dollar permit, and then every ten thousand it goes up another ten dollars. They're not real expensive, there, there's no way we could recoup our costs if, if we had to fix something with it.
If we had, if we had to fix road damage, I wouldn't do it. But same match with you now.
What's the multiplier if somebody doesn't get one? Like, what are the longer than three times permit if they don't get one and you get that?
Oh, yeah, it's probably higher, it's pretty expensive. I mean, let's just say somebody got pulled over being ten thousand pounds over, I suppose it's five, six hundred dollars down there. Maybe a lot of them don't get it.
I don't remember the, there's a formula they have for certain number of pounds up to a certain weight and then more.
Yeah, the more the over. Bigger the fine.
Mainly, it's just to know who's coming through with over width or right over weight, something like that.
We can rob them on what roads we want, we can keep them all township forever, however we want to.
I think we can, uh, also put that in with the study that, that funded, first more study for the road ones.
It's kind of becoming the same in the future, I mean, a lot of, all of the counties out west are doing it now, of course, because it's about oil fields, but it's moving this way now, I mean, a lot of it's for, while we see, uh, these people doing tiling in farm fields, they have to move their ditch, ditchers that are too big and excavators that are too big and that kind of stuff, that's, you know, it's not so much a divisible load like gravel, for instance, you can lighten your load on gravel, you don't need an over, overweight permit. It's, uh, types of loads that, like windmills that can't be tore down or whatever, that type of stuff.
Is twenty dollars the average thirty, do you, that's?
It, even the state, yeah.
That's like a twenty dollars beating ticket.
Even the state, it's like a twenty, yeah.
So you want a motion to?
Well, not necessarily, just should I keep pursuing this or?
Have we visited with the townships about this at all?
No, I just heard of this yesterday.
We just started yesterday.
Yeah. There, there's a gal in Big Mark that, uh, is kind of going around helping all these counties and showing their, everybody's examples and she was in the office yesterday showing you.
What counties in this area are using it?
Well, Pembina has their own, uh, COC or whatever you want to call them, and, uh, they have a permit process. It's easy, might be easier to tell you which ones don't. Nelson doesn't have a permitting process.
Benson?
Benson doesn't have anything online, no.
Tolliver and Galliler?
Tolliver does, Galliler does.
What's Tolliver, can you copy or look at their information, what they're doing?
Yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea for the commission to look at that first, you know.
Sure, I can send it to you. That one's really basic.
Yeah, just email it to us so we can look at it, okay?
Because we're not dealing with oil traffic, I mean, like they are in the western part of state, you know? They're not dealing with oil traffic that much anymore either, so.
My thought was, uh, the refinery coming in and then there's going to be a few loads that are going to be way overweight down there, it's not, not many, but.
But they're basically going to take care of their road from highway two to the refinery, right, Rachel?
Correct.
Correct. So that's really not going to cause the county any concern, because I'm sure they're going to take care of their road. So we, we really can't use that as a crutch, you know, to do this project. These, these people that are going out tiling, I would imagine they have to get on highway two and more to go wherever they're going, right? So they're evidently must be legal there.
Yeah, but that's a higher weight limit than our.
What roads in our county are one oh five five?
Just that one mile and then that one South Prairie. And then the one south to Hammond, that's it.
The Woodruff Road is not one oh five five? I thought Kevin said it was.
It might have been built that way because that's not the way we have a sign.
But it's built that way?
Yeah.
So we should have a sign that way then?
I'll do that.
Well, didn't we raise the speed limit on the Woodruff? So, in order to raise the speed limit, we had to have the weight.
No, not really, I mean, that's.
Two hundred and five?
Two different issues.
It is, okay. I thought, I thought one was contingent on the other.
Well, you're thinking of that, uh, twenty-one oh three money, that, that was conditioned, but.
Okay.
And that didn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
I thought Brian was pretty adamant about these roads are getting money to stay on one oh five five or built to that.
Yep.
That they should be restricted to that and not the county through on lower restrictions. I thought he was very adamant in that meeting that gave him that.
Right.
For reconstruction projects, yeah.
For reconstruction, yeah, yeah.
That's the whole state's goal.
Right.
Is to build these roads at one oh five five, is there any put money out, right, Paul?
Yeah.
They want it built to that, correct?
Unless it's minor re-able, if they're left overly, you don't have to raise it up.
Right.
Any reconstruction, they want it done to that.
Right. The construction.
How was Woodruff, well, how was the Woodruff people?
Those stimulus and.
County funds. A little bit at all, at all.
But the state was, the money came to the state.
But, yeah, it had nothing to do with the current restrictions.
But there were no stipulations like that?
No.
Uh.
No.
Yeah, like we said, bring us some information from the surrounding counties that are doing it and let's see what they're doing, you know? Good. Anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Kevin, have you been approached about that road in Dry Lake Township on, um, west, going west from the Farm to Market Road there? Dan Webster talked to you about it, if it came out of the water, would you, uh, be, um, able to plate it?
Yeah, we, I sent Nick up there yesterday, looked at it and, um, there's a hole in that road that's eighteen feet wide and a foot and a half deep and it's covered with water, water's flowing.
Through.
Yeah, through the hole, through the opening and the truck or whatever, so. In order to fix that, we'd have to fill that, it's a pretty good sized ditch.
Right.
First and then put the gravel on.
Is there a culvert?
No, they took the, somebody took.
Somebody took the culvert out, that's where the culvert was.
Yep, exactly, they would create a, a loose spot for dirt and then that's what washed it up.
So they.
There's no way they're driving down that road.
No.
I think Danny might have said they're driving down it, but.
No.
Oh my God, you'd be stuck big time there.
So what do they want us to do?
That's what Danny Webster wanted yesterday.
To fill it, fill and put some gravel on and. Would you reinsert the culvert then? Do I, would you have to do it or what would you do? You don't know?
Yeah, if you want me to, I will, but it won't last, they'll get somebody out there to take it out again.
Is this a township or a county road?
It's a fifty fifty.
It's a fifty fifty road, yeah.
Turnback road.
Get me a map of that area, I want to take a look at it. Not today, just, I'm going to be out there, so. I've never seen this, I've heard it half a dozen times in the commission meeting, but I've never found a chance to look at it.
It's like right above.
Love to see from here. What town, what town or?
Dry Lake Township.
I'll check it later, so.
Okay.
Just use the Fire Illinois.
And between River Treado and the Fire Illinois.
Yeah, I know where you're at. Okay, anything else? I got a call this morning on the Rocket Road.
Yeah, I did, I did this.
They were fixing that. Big hole, uh, tried to fill it in with some gravel. I haven't been there.
No, we, we just.
I haven't, but I got a call this morning.
We just used the mortar grater to try and fill the hole and the guys went up there this morning to dig it out and put the fabric in.
They did.
Yes.
We're up there to do it.
We did. There's just the one hole, though, what they're doing, there's lots of other holes. But this is the one that. But this is the one that bad, bad. It's, it's ugly.
But the individual that called me was very appreciative of what you did last year up there on the Rocket Road, right?
Yep.
Fabric, put the fabric in. He said that's the hardest spot on the whole road, he said, so it looks very good, I guess.
So that's what they're doing with this spot today. It's not a very big spot, maybe twenty feet long, but it's bad.
Water holes, a little boil.
Yeah, it is. It's a boil like Bill was talking about, yeah.
Water up both sides?
No water.
Don't worry.
Just don't blame the water.
Can't blame the water, just some rocks. Okay, anything else, Kevin? Thank you. Okay, without moving on to finished business. Fire exemption. Jerry, what do you have to add on this? If you put this up, eh?
Yeah, I've just put that together quick. It's just a kind of a start to the process, I guess. Don't have much time right now to, to deal with it, so. Is this what Grand Forks County's been doing since their state's attorney has put together a form? Well, they, they've been doing it for quite a while, so the initial process is kind of, you know, gone to annual processes. Grand Forks County, they signed our application in December, but that'll be down the road.
But they're doing that, the CPA affidavit thing?
Yeah. Yeah, they said that works, that works pretty good to, you know, have the CPA sign it rather than having somebody else audit it. They audit, the CPA signs his, he puts his license on the line really.
Have you looked at what Nelson County's done? What information they have?
They really have an informal thing that's the way, anyway, I think.
Informal?
Can you make sure we get invited to the perimeter road meeting?
Yes, absolutely.
Benson and Eddie Coming both been doing this for years. I talked with the commissioners from both Benson and Eddie, and they've been, they're on a three-year plan. They've been doing it for many years.
But we haven't looked at what Nelson, how they get, what about their?
Nelson.
Would they have information for us?
I've been checked, like I said. We've got twenty-four meetings before the end of the month that I'm trying to get ready for, so I haven't had much time to put this together.
Okay.
So I haven't checked with Nelson. I talked with her. With the tax director.
You got a new person in Nelson? No?
No.
Okay. Okay, I'm sure she probably has information for everyone.
I'm, I'm confused. How can you generate a list without assessing? How, who, how are you gonna decide who's on this list? Doesn't everything have to be assessed in order to determine whether or not it's a taxable property? How can you not, how can you, how can you make a list if you haven't assessed the property?
I think what Steve put together that map identifying farmsteads with structures on is the way you start. Then you send the application out to every place you even think there might be a structure.
The five hundred seventy-eight.
And in order to assess.
Plus.
Four hundred. There's no reason for us to go out and look at four hundred that we're not gonna tax. We need to determine which ones we have.
How do you know, how do you know you're not gonna tax those four hundred?
If they qualify.
If you haven't assessed them.
Are you assessing, I'm, I'm talking assessing means putting a value on it. Are you talking about assessing? You know, we don't wanna put a value on something we're not gonna tax. I don't know how.
There's no sense in putting a value on exempt property.
Right, we'd be measuring every once in a green bin and.
Would you say, Dale? There's no sense in putting a value on exempt properties.
Right. How is property exempt if it hasn't been assessed?
Well, when they fill out the application, if they, if they write in there that they exempt and you send it back and you agree with that, then there's no sense in going over there at all. Just the ones that say, yeah, it may be taxable.
Basically, like Ed said before, we go through, we eliminate out that five seventy-eight, what's underwater, what we know isn't taxable automatically.
Yep.
And then say there's a list of four hundred and fifty left, we send out the letter, as Jerry said, that says, this is what's going on, information, send in the application. They fill it out. If it comes back and says they're exempt and they have the thing filled out by the CPA, they automatically are off the list then. And then say we're down to a hundred at that point, then those people with the hundred that get assessed.
Yep.
So you don't do any assessing?
No, you don't have to assess the other one, because why would you do that? It's a hassle for them and, and it's too much work for us to take, try to undertake. I mean, we might, when we get the list, we don't know if we may only have ten houses or twenty houses. It doesn't make sense to assess four hundred and fifty when you only got twenty.
The initial assessment is gonna take, gonna take the time, put the value on, on the property.
Yeah, so I mean, it's allowing people to fill out paperwork and get it lined up that way so we don't make ourselves more work than we have to, I guess, in terms of.
We have approximately twenty townships that have their own assessors, is that correct?
Eighteen.
Or whatever. But it makes sense to have them in a meeting and see what their idea is on how to do this, how to go about it. Maybe they could come up with lists within their own township on who, who we should assess, or who they want to assess, not we need to. If they have their own assessor, they're gonna do the assessing. But maybe they can come up, okay, John Doe, you gotta assess him, he works him down, wife works him down, whatever. Maybe we should do that. And then I think doing something like that involving the people in the county instead of us sitting here in the courthouse throwing things at them, letters. I honestly believe it would be a little less hostile and a little less tax cop idea, you know? But let's get them involved.
Well, we, we have them in every February and give them instructions.
Yes, I agree with you, but we haven't given them this instruction.
Every, every year I do.
Every year we do.
Every year I do.
They've gotten this instruction. I, I talked to one of the assessors.
Okay, okay, hold it now, hold it up. Let's, let's get through this. Why don't we bring them in again and say, the county is serious about doing this, very serious. And you need to come back with a list of the ones that are, that are, you know, that should be taxed, I don't know, eligible to be taxed or how you wanna say it, but.
You already don't have, haven't you?
We've done that every year since I've worked here.
But you're not following what I'm saying. Let's get the assessors involved. Let's let them have some ownership to this.
And that's, that's what we've done up to this point.
That is exactly what the, what the tax director.
We actually gave the assessors this year lists of people that we know don't qualify, and they came back and didn't put them on the tax rolls.
So your, your other answer is just fire a letter out to the ones you think are, that should be taxed, is that right? The ones like Adam says?
No.
Four hundred and fifty or so. What do you think, Adam? What do you think is?
I agree, I agree to the point of being collaborative. I mean, it's, it's a good idea to involve people in the process so they feel like they own it a little bit. With that being said, then you're putting the onus on the assessors to make the determination if they're, I mean, how are they gonna know what the financial records of their neighbors look like?
And that is exactly.
But indeed, well, we're off the farm, I guess.
Well, I know. I mean, there's automatically people that might, that you're gonna know if neither of them farms, they shouldn't be being taxed and if they aren't being taxed now, that they qualify. But I'm saying there's probably gonna be several situations with it. And I guess at that point, if, if it's a situation or it's a question, you send them the letter. I, I guess, I don't have a problem with being collaborative, but at the same point, I don't know if we wanna put the onus on our local assessors either, because, you know, that's.
It's their neighbors. It's pretty much a volunteer job.
Yeah, it's a volunteer job. It's their neighbors and you don't wanna really put it on them, because, I mean, boy, that, that makes it, that makes their life a little tough, I think.
That's part, that's part of the job description, though.
I know, but it's.
I know, but I talked with one of the assessors, one of the independent assessors, and he flat out told me, I never took this job on to assess people's homes. And I said, well, isn't that part of what you do every year when you go in for that, for the annual meeting? He said, no, I took this job on twenty years ago to assess farmland. I didn't, I don't know, I don't know how to assess anybody's household. I, I'm not gonna do that.
Well, we're. They assess the farmland.
Well, that, but that's what, that's, that's what he said to me, and I have no reason to believe he's ever gonna go out and start assessing households in his, in his township. And he's an upfront kinda guy.
I guess that's a secondary situation. I mean, if they're all assesses, we can't force them, I suppose.
So, so the eighteen townships who have their own assessors, they really don't have to, they don't really have to comply with the law as far as the county's concerned? This is my question, as far as the county's concerned, because they are, they are independent and they shouldn't have to. Is that how we're gonna do it? And the eighteen that, well, that, well, you just said, if that's, that's their conscience, if they don't, if they don't wanna assess it, they shouldn't have to.
I wouldn't say that's what I said. I would say that that's, that's a question for Lonnie, I'm not aware.
Well, preferably you'd want the townships doing their assessment, but they also have to follow the law. Jerry, is there, you know, I haven't looked at this in, in statutes, but is there a, some sort of a supervisory role that the county has over township assessors?
Yes, yeah.
In a way.
Well, we, we, and, and we work with the townships and cities, you know, if they need help, in fact, there hasn't been a township or city assessors really put their own value on something without our assistance, because we have the software, they don't. So it's not like we throw them under the bus and have them go do everything. We guide them, we, and, and it's my, part of my job to supervise them, assist them, instruct them, and that's what we try and do with the four hour instruction. You know, it's a pretty fast-paced thing that they don't learn much there actually. They don't wanna be there. But then, as tax director, it's also my job to equalize things. And right now, we don't have a very equalized system, because when we take on a township, I think we have our townships pretty well identify who's a farmer and who isn't. It's the ones, the ones that have their own assessors, we don't get help in those townships. I don't know who lives up by Edmore on the farms or anywhere else, so it, I think it just about has to be a county process. We can identify farmsteads that, that have buildings on that are taxed and send them an application. It might be as simple as checking, maybe it's just a concept that we don't know that, send them back. And it's fine, that's fine. But I, I don't think it's really fair to the townships to lay it on their back, you know, to determine and be checking people's income records and.
No, no, I didn't say that, but I said to come up with some type of plan of who is in their township. I didn't say check, check income tax records. I didn't say that at all. You wouldn't have a damn assessor left in the county if you hadn't told them that.
No, no, you would.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, maybe it's a situation where we have the list of five hundred and seventy-eight, we pair the list out automatically off of what we know is in water and things like that, and then we can look at how many houses are, are possible properties or in each township. And then at that point, we maybe have a meeting with the assessors just to inform them what's going on and have them to be part of the process. I mean, they can look at the list and just kinda give it a quick order, just to be collaborative. I don't know if that's what we wanna do, but it never hurts to have people.
And I agree with that. I mean, I agree with that. I agree with you on that end, that, that we should have involvement with these assessors. You know, they're still doing the job.
Yeah.
Well, we have an advisory meeting in place, correct, Jerry?
Not that, not that, I don't know. For, for what, the advisory?
For, you know, taxes?
For assessors?
No.
No.
Did you say something like that?
Well, once a year they need.
Oh, yeah, they, all the assessors get together and he has an advisory role to help them, basically.
Oh.
Yeah, for that four-hour meeting, once a year.
Yeah, I think they have questions.
It's for them to pick up their assessment book.
And I said, you know, how the process works and how you make things up.
I think Adam's following what I'm trying to do.
Yeah, I understand.
But let's not take all the heat, you know? I don't really wanna take all the heat.
I agree where you're coming from, just, it's.
I think we have to take all the heat.
We're, we're gonna end up taking, we'll end up taking most of the heat, I think, but I do agree with the concept that if you, if you include people and make it a little more inclusive, they'll probably be a little bit more open to the process than, you know, if people are feel like they're being listened to at least at all, and, and not just feel like we're listening to them.
But what if we narrowed it down? I'm sure there's a lot to come out of that.
That's what I'd say. I think we need, we need to narrow it.
I mean, I've looked at a couple of them and they're people's horse farms, I mean, you know?
If we narrow it down, make a list by the township and then call all the townships in and have a meeting with them and say, you know, what do you think of this list, before we send anything out to the public?
Yeah, I think that's a good one. I would, I would agree with that. It kinda works all process.
And it isn't really, it isn't that elaborate either, because I've looked at a lot of them and, you know, you look out across the countryside and there used to be a farmstead probably every square mile or whatever, so that would mean that there was thirty-six in the township, but there isn't anymore. So there's about fifteen, ten to fifteen in every township. And those township assessors know who lives in those places. That's the coffee shop talk. They know who lives there and what they do for a living and everything else, and they also know who's just been farming all their lives, their wife has never had a job off the farm. They know who to eliminate, but of course, you still have to send those one, but a different form letter could go with those or whatever and say, you know, you just fill this out and send it back. You're gonna need to do this every year now to be in compliance or every three years. And, you know, I looked in our township, for instance, and it'd be simple, it'd be simple. There, I mean, there's a couple guys that are farmers and there's a couple guys that are. And it's gonna go that way. It's not gonna be very difficult at all. Okay? I guess you've got direction right. Okay, carry on.
The other thing I wanna mention is we have a soils committee meeting set up, talking committees. The soils committee is meeting on the eighth month at eight thirty in the morning on the ag complaints for this year. Down in the historical room.
What time was that, Jerry?
Eight thirty.
How many do you have on that committee?
Seven.
Seven, I think, yeah.
Well, plus NRCS, seven plus Bill Otis and Alan Goulthwaite from NRCS.
And if anyone has complaints about the soil modifier changes and things like that for evaluation.
It's just about all orders, what we deal with.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
Nothing, yeah.
And is that eight thirty, you said?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, we've been in a human resource update.
I talked to Jenny at the North Dakota Association of Townies and she is reviewing all options and she'll get back to me, so at this point I have nothing to report.
Terminal Road, we talked to that. New business, review employee handbook updates.
You guys got all the information sent out to you in your hand, it's on your notebook. Basically, I sent it to the Department head. There was a couple questions and he answered them and I don't know, Kevin reviewed it early. I have, I don't know if Jerry had a chance to look at all the changes.
I read through a quick one.
Didn't see. Did you have a chance to go to the morning? Would you be able to?
Go on a table up there?
So if you wanna table it or if you wanna fill in the whole handbook and revise it and then review it, and what is your, has everybody had a chance to read it?
Well, yeah.
Well, I mean, that kind of book, I wish.
I don't know.
I, I can, I thought you'd be wanting to draw.
That's the Association of Townies?
No, yeah, he's through the association. He didn't have his energy yet, Chuck. But these are changes he's putting in.
He's putting in, and he, he crossed out what he took out and, and underlined what was in it.
A lot of it's just not, well, I shouldn't say rewording, but it's just rewording how the policy language works.
Right.
I, I had one question for Lonnie, just sort of, I was looking at it and basically we state we're equal opportunity employment in a lot of different classifications and then, but we're still at will. How does that work with the law? I, I don't quite, how does that jive against?
You know, there's so many nuances to employment law that on one hand, we have an employment at will state and there's an argument that when you have personnel policies, that people can be hired and fired from them, that, that creates contact contractual relationship. And that's something that if you don't regularly practice employment. Uh, and that's something that if you don't regularly practice employment law, I, you're not in a good position to talk about it.
That's kinda what I figured, but I was just like, I don't know how that works.
It's not a bright line, black and white kinda thing, so.
I mean, I understand.
That sounds like lawyer talk.
And that was about the only talk that you're gonna get out of me on that.
Move on then.
Did you, so do we need to approve it?
Shouldn't ask, shouldn't ask the lower question, but I was just kinda curious.
If you're okay with it, we do need a motion to approve it, to have them put it all inserts into the handbook and then I'll hand those out to you for a file.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, in fact, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There's a second, all, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed. Okay. Homestead credit.
Home, okay.
Got a motion to approve the homestead credit, we got a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, site authorization.
I'll say.
Motion is second to approve the site authorization. Do two of them, no?
Yep.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries, outlet advisory committee discussion. Uh, after the comments they had on the radio. State Water Board, I thought it'd be very important if we have some kind of consensus on what message we wanna carry to the meeting next week in Carrington. Not running the East End pumps, I'll be right up front, should not be on the table at all.
No, I don't think, you know, they, they probably will run them, um,
the way I understand it. Not probably, they gotta be told by the county.
Well, which may or may not, I don't know. If we wanna put a resolution together or whatever, like we have, example, that would be a bad idea to bring, bring us.
This resolution only talks about the elevation, height.
Well, I mean, just a resolution.
When, when is the meeting?
It's the fourteen, what time was it built? One to four.
One to four?
At Carrington.
Fourteenth, one to four.
Well, I, at some, at one point in time, the commission made the motion and it's in policy. It wasn't policy at that point, but fourteen forty-six is the elevation we're shooting for.
Yeah.
So, if we're shooting for fourteen forty-six, we're asking them to pump us on until we get to fourteen forty-six, so I would assume.
We could reiterate that.
As we change the resolution.
We don't.
And they have that, this resolution?
No, that one, but there's gotta be a resolution, I remember thinking that.
Good, that's, that's what the city was at too, the city's part of the outlet, it's all correct. The city's part of the outlet, it's our committee as well, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yeah. And they are, you know, we do have a resolution on the books for the outlet advisory committee. Um, we're only a portion of that. The Manitowas, Manitopans and the Minnesotans are practically demanding that those pumps get shut off at fourteen fifty because they were put in place to control a disaster and they think they were gonna be out of the woods as far as the disaster goes by then. We've got plenty of room with our eight foot leeway then, that we could get going again. But the governor has assured me that he wants to keep going, he's not gonna shut the pumps off until we get going fourteen fifty, so I'm, I'm fairly, uh, secure in my thoughts that they are gonna turn the East End on as well. But like they said on that article in, in the news that, you know, they're gonna be held by constraints now. We've always been right up to the maximum, even with the freshwater inflows that we've had in the past few years. And so the East End being the most, uh, saline water, so to speak, um, they might have to control that one pretty hard to meet those seven hundred and fifty unless, um, standards in.
I'm sure that's the first thing that's gonna be out of anyone's mouth, so.
Exactly.
But, but they're not, they're, they're, they're looking at, um, this lake probably making fourteen fifty this year, so it's gonna be an important topic.
Yes, I agree with you. What's the location?
Chief.
In, in way of a question, that total results outfit number that they've thrown around in the past, they ran the West End, they ran the East End, where were we at on the TDS when they were running both of them previously? Were we below?
We were right, sir. Right, and sometimes pushing it.
Cause it, it all sounded like it is kinda letting it go.
With the inflows we had, you know, natural influx on the river, I thought we were considerably lower.
So, we remember judging that number?
Oh, oh, no, we were, we were.
Oh, we weren't, didn't we ever get over that number?
Yep, we had been over that number, but by the, but by the time.
Over the, over the seven fifty on the TDS.
By the time it went through the system and got water brought into it from other sources and hit the Canadian border, it was.
That's where the, they do the monitoring.
That's, that's where they do the most important monitoring, that, you know, within the state, it's all the way a little bit higher.
Okay, I was just kinda curious.
That's where they really draw the line and, um.
Are we right there then?
Well, uh.
Or are we well along?
What happens is, is, is the volcano down actually gains TDS and stuff in winter time because a lot of times the freshwater runs off, the salts and stuff soak, sink to the bottom.
Right.
And then the spring runoff flushes out. And then as the water flows in and stuff, it disturbs everything up and, and, uh, and so we, we pushed the envelope because we know that that happens. And, uh, and that's another reason why the, they, they won't, won't run the outputs in the winter time is because of that. And everything needs a rest, but it's settled. But, um, they've been pushing that envelope ever since they started that up. And, uh, so far, we've been able to just pump everything at full steam, but once we get down to that fourteen fifty, they're gonna start watching it a little bit closer, so we're gonna have to rely on a lot of natural evaporation too, which is most of it. Three to six inches a year is all they get pumped out, literally go down two feet a year.
Oh, everybody knows how far it can go down, everybody knows how far it can go up. I've seen it come up five feet.
Yeah.
One season, so. I think, so the point is, I think, cause me, it's by the way important, like Rams County, we have numerous roads underwater yet, I mean, just numerous roads from the lake. Numerous acres of land that people aren't farming.
I would say that if, if they claim that the disaster is over, tell them to drive west to tell us something about it.
Yeah.
The disaster's not over.
Exactly, it's a long time, every year.
Tell them to come up to my, tell them to come up to my place and look at all the roads we had to raise, the disaster's not over.
Every year, I bumped into the governor right before the meeting and, uh, he says, well, I want you to, you know, look at the whole picture and the more noise we make, the more awake these guys are gonna get. So, if we can just keep those pumps going and, uh.
Yeah, that's right, you just said get more noise made.
That we make.
I plan on being there, I hope other commissioners plan on being there if you guys.
They'll be ready to get to them.
He said if we, if we make a bunch of noise, he said they'll let them shut off at fifty.
Fourteenth at one P M.
Fourteenth at one, okay.
I think it's.
Gonna be a big turn going on the pumps, so.
I got the equipment down there to fix the bay, huh?
Yeah, I think I've pretty well done, I'll go with that last.
And it's pretty much done?
It is done. Uh, we talked so, it is done.
It's all done, huh?
How many years has the East End outlet pumped for now? How many years has the East End outlet been running now?
Two.
Two?
Is it three?
It's probably three years.
This is the third year.
So essentially, we're talking what shut down pumps we spent eighty million dollars on, off of two years of operation.
Yeah, all of the questions, and we have to reiterate that.
Has there been any consensus, has anybody talked to anyone from over on the lake that doesn't want them or wants them shut off?
You wanna ask, you know, I think.
I'm just curious.
I mean, it's worth a ask, I guess, so.
I mean, yeah, it'd be something to talk to Jeff.
What are you hearing, Rachel?
Uh, I actually personally have relatives that own property in the East End of Devil's Lake Home and they don't wanna shut off, but as far as other people, I don't know. I haven't heard of anybody asking to shut it off, I can tell you that.
Where they're getting their opposition from is all money that's been spent in, uh, marinas and, well, yeah.
But even.
Campgrounds and recreation and stuff like that, and they're huge, they're huge.
But that is huge is last, last plan.
No, that's right.
He's made one in a new marina and it's still perfectly, I mean, it's untouched basically for the whole.
I mean, I'll go on record as saying if I have to choose between a campground and farmland as a commission, I will choose the farmland.
And all those campgrounds also lost rows as they went out, so there's a, there's a lot of ruin that's ruined.
We've got a lot of things on our side because barely seen, never been able to flush their blue system, but Devil's Lake water. And, and that happened a couple of years ago and.
And they were crying for our water.
And the fishing wild lake for gaming fish, whoever controls the, the catfish in the Red River, said they probably lost every catfish in the Red River in Devil's Lake water when they were running up that river.
One thing I had, going to the DLEC meeting in the base of the Corados and Garland Hoisted was there and Joel Storstein. Yeah, it's a sad story. If you drive out to county town and you look at their places, you know where they're at. That's sad.
And I think Garland Hoisted put it very eloquent, like, think about that while you're dragging back to your home and your business and your life and imagine losing it all.
Is he still in the area?
Charlie, yeah, he's got a house in the town.
Well, I guess I'd like to interate on what Joel Storstein said, he, when you visited, I guess I've known Joel for a long time. He said, I've got sixteen hundred acres under sixteen feet of water. Uh, if that isn't enough to, uh, and, no, no compensation whatsoever. I mean, people's got, and I am not afraid to tell people that because I know Joel, have known him for a long time.
Exactly.
And I mean, whoever you talk to, you can say, well, I got this friend that's got this and he's received nothing. What do you do?
Don't tell me there's no disaster, right?
Pardon?
Don't tell us there's no disaster in Rams County.
Right, right. I know the water board's gonna go, um, I would hold the city commission goes because I think it's a light old time that we keep them pumping, running three feet of cushion. They're only three feet away from the all time high, right, Bill?
Yep. They, they have a contingent from the city that goes down all the time, wait, the mayor said so.
But, uh.
Do we want a specific resolution or do we just wanna kinda?
Yeah, that's my question, do we, do we need to make up another?
Hey, we look back the one we have.
Was this the one, there's this one, but there can't be another one, we didn't.
Probably did one with fourteen forty-six for.
We did, okay, do you remember the year, Bill?
No, I don't, but.
I'll look.
We should have that, but.
Yeah, right.
I, I, yeah, I don't think we necessarily need a new resolution if we've stayed with it in the past. I think fourteen forty-six, that's what we should be for.
I think we need a new resolution.
And I will post that there is a meeting in Carrington that we're covered.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Portfolios, geez, we've got it, no. Got two minutes.
Start over there.
I'll start with you, Mark.
Ladies first, ladies first, go ahead. Pretty quiet.
It's building.
You building?
It's building.
Can I sign some stuff where you're ready?
Buildings and grounds looks good, uh, we've got our, we've got our elevator fixed, redone and working. I guess that's how, yeah, that's my portfolio, yeah. I think Jerry gave a pretty good presentation today. We're still working on having all the, uh, newly put in, that we need to put in in the, in the armory and where we're gonna get funds from. Social services is doing well, as most of you know. Built twenty oh six, twenty oh six?
Twenty two.
Twenty-two oh six pass, yeah, I didn't think that sounded well and, uh, that should give significant property tax relief to the people around the county. Um, we got, I think the estimate is about six hundred and eleven thousand dollars over an eighteen month period of time. Granted, from, uh, from state takeover of, of, uh, about funds and three hundred for, three hundred plus for the, the, um, being the actual reservation that we, that we allotted. And there, you know, there are some stipulations in it and that was the big fight as to who gets to sit on the committee to determine what the leaves and social services are in the state. And that went back and forth through the House and Senate. The House kept kicking it back to the Senate and the Senate kept asking it and turning it back down again.
They ended up turning it into a study, correct, instead of an actual committee? A study on how?
They turned it into a study, yeah, from the committee, yeah. What else do I have? Four Devil's Lake, I could have Rachel be listening up there. There's a lot of stuff going on, a lot.
Yeah, there's, um, for sure, two businesses that are interested in the industrial park if the refinery comes. So, that's, that's exciting, that would be in the new industrial park. We've had four, um, four new businesses go in our old industrial park, um, the last year. Uh, the refinery is, the process we're out of that is a developer's agreement. We went out to Seattle a couple of weeks ago to sit with the refinery and our attorney, Mike Howell. Um, it's under attorney client privilege, so I can't disclose a lot of information. However, it is a very large document that covers, um, everything from A to Z in it in regards to protection of the city, the county, the community and also, um, responsibilities of their refinery and responsibilities of the city. Just laying out whose rules are what, so, um, there's no pointing fingers halfway through. Um, it covers financial pieces such as taxation, um, uh, I guess, everything, everything is possible. But, um, when that becomes available as soon as it is sent to the city commissioners, it becomes a open record and I can also send it to you guys at that point. Um, warning you, it'll take you a while to read through it, but, um, it's all very good information. Uh, we're expecting that that will be available at the next city commission meeting on the fourteenth, I believe, or eighteenth. Eighteenth, I believe as well, hit the agenda for the city commission.
Seventeen, yeah, eighteen, you're right.
The city commission approval on that and then at that point, the refinery will then submit their current application. They've been holding off, um, especially the last month or two, cause they know at this point they're probably not gonna get in and do any work this year. So, if it gets approved in October, November, December, it has the same outcome of starting in the spring. So, um, they've been very great to work with, uh, they've commended our community as, um, how nice it's been to work with us, so we're excited about that. But, um, a lot of housing things are taking place right now, we're looking, a lot of people are in discussion of building, apartment buildings, things like that, if the refinery comes. A lot of things are just contingent on it, if that happens, I think we're gonna see a, a flourish of activity here. Um, Reg Herman and his investor group with the Walmart building, they are going forward and have started demolition and we've been in that building, looked at it. It's a lot larger than when the Walmart aisles are in there, I can say that. Um, but, I think he's got a great project going on, it's exciting, it'll be fun to see what all locks in there. There's a strip mall going in where the top motel is, there'll be a Dollar Tree in there, um, Marisa's will move there and then there's four thousand vacant property in that building that they'll be looking for retail space. Um, Senex is moving forward, forward as far as I know on the west side. Um, he's got outlets available that he'll be selling off or his intention is to sell off to additional development and growth. Um, I believe there'll be a restaurant, I don't think it's been named a fast food restaurant, but along with that. Um, and the Contractors Park, it will be east of town as well, except they want to make your Contractors Park cause, um, they work on right now as far as that goes, so. Very exciting, fun, fun to be around. Any questions for me?
So, it looks very favorable for the refinery?
Yes, yes, um, their comments to us are at this point, they don't, they can't foresee a red light, so.
They're saying that?
Yeah. Yeah.
It's very, it's very interesting that they came in with the, with the mindset that they want to be a vital part of our community. They, they didn't, they basically asked for nothing except community acceptance. And, uh, that doesn't happen very often.
No, in fact, they were just at legislation at the state one and some Wilson representatives were there from our community and they were essentially begging, um, well, why don't you come to Wilson, we're set up for you, we're ready to go, you wanna have hoops? Why, why do us in Devil's Lake, you're gonna be close to Bakken? And I think it was based on working with the community here and how it's turned out.
About the gas line.
That and, but they're set up in Wilson where it would probably be a non-issue. They won't be doing town hall meetings and all of these things that's done here, but they, they definitely committed to our community and have, um, done everything that we've asked to, to help along with this, so.
That's good. Good to hear.
Yeah, it's very exciting, I'm sure there'll be more to come and of course, you guys will see property tax, um, effects in regards to refining as well, so that's very exciting for all of us.
Oh, Sister Kell, got no money from the state, there'll be a lot of bell piping again in the coming year. No more money. There, there will be some issues. They're working hard with the SCIDIC, which is the, um, grant. They got a grant and they contracted it out, um, with substance abuse in the community and against really good things with the school system and all of the people that are on it. Okay?
Bill?
Kevin, I'll over everything on the road. The airport, everything's going good at the airport, North Central Bank, we call it Prairie. Is that Association, the county's director meeting today and conference this year is going to be October twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. And they've got to change the venue this year. It's going to be, actually going to be three times the size as it was before, but they're going to hold the rates the same so that they don't get accused of jumping the rates because of the size of the venue. But they're going to have three times as many contributors or vendors. Uh, it's all going to be held at the civic center and the big iron show that goes on there is going to be indoors instead of outdoors this year, which is going to be great. And, uh, they're looking forward to having a really good conference this year. They've got, um, a lot invested in it and it'd be nice to feature your question there. Uh, at that meeting, I, I've got some.
Can I interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
I think Betty already has reservations for the motel. For the October conference? For the October conference, right? Yeah.
Everybody, yeah.
Yeah, so if you're going to go, make sure you let Betty know, Betty know so that she can get your rooms for you.
Everything's going on, I think at Radisson this year.
Yes, it's at Radisson.
So, and that's walking distance from a lot of different places, so if you can get your room there, um, go ahead and, yeah.
Can we do a panel? Only five people.
Yeah, and they did make me a reservation through the association.
But they, they know that. Don't take it as, same with Kevin.
Gary.
We kind of. And Jerry.
Kevin and Jerry, yeah.
We work together.
Okay, the, some of the information that got handed out there was kind of nice because the legislative thing is over with, so, uh, what they, what I have here is one-time local funding, um, amongst for Senate Bill twenty-one oh three and Senate Bill eleven seventy-six on the backside. It has a lot of uses for those two bills. Might be interesting for everybody to have a copy of that. I'll leave these with Elizabeth so she can copy these and give it to everybody. The Department of Human Services, uh, what the final final was on all of that stuff and for each county and, uh, how it's going to go into twenty fifteen through twenty seventeen, excellent evaluation of bills. And then the excerpt from New Language from Senate Bill twenty-two oh six is on the backside of this one. This is a list of all the bills that I've heard that have county priorities listed on them and the street sides tells you how, how the votes went to pass, to pass and, and which failed and how many votes they passed and failed by. So, that's kind of interesting. And then, everybody's always had a question as to how did they come up with eighty-five, twenty-five, Forty-Fifth Street Northeast and Northwest and Southeast and Southwest? And this was, uh, put together by a guy named Berkeley and it's the Berkeley Addressing System is what the nine-one-one goes by. It's very, very interesting as to how all these streets and avenues and everything else can help and how they ham out in between, uh, every hundred feet. So, you could figure out exactly what your address is going to be just by knowing how many feet down the road you are from the intersection or whatever, so, it's kind of interesting information, so.
Sure.
There you have it.
I'll try to keep my insurance. Uh, about two minutes. The recorder, everything is going well as far as I know. It's quiet down there, she said, but I visited with her last week. They got the document preservation up, we'll wait for the documents to come back, correct? And then we'll make our final agreement with that company. Uh, I haven't spoken with Lisa for a while, so I was actually going out to visit with her after this. Rams County Housing Authority, uh, we had our annual meeting, um, everything's going well there. The audit came back with a few concerns just about how to do it, but it's more just, we've only got two staff members, so it's kind of hard to keep everything separated when it comes to the auditing, but we're going to put some controls in there to try to do a little bit better job on that, but financially, everything's going well. How they actually started to pay again, so that's good. Chamber, uh, Real Fund Days is coming up in June?
Yep, June twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seventh. And then there's the fishing tournament with that as well, correct?
Yes, there is.
There's all, all kinds of interesting things going on.
Thirty-nine thousand.
Um, we're having a radio program in, in May to, uh, kind of advertise for the city, so that's a good deal. I can't remember the date on that.
May twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Kind of put out all my stuff at home. So, that's coming up and, uh, other than that, uh, it seems to be going well.
Very good. Thank you.
Three hundred dollars in sales event this year.
Isn't that amazing?
Might even shorter than Adam's. Last Library Board meeting's coming up, but we're going to have to assign a Library Board member from the county. Heritage Board, um, our new museum director is moving to Devil's Lake this weekend. He'll take over his duties soon after. And then, uh, I guess, just so we can touch on this, I was unaware of this article that came out in the paper. I guess I want to make mention that, you know, the board is in charge of what goes on at the Land Enforcement Center. I think there was just some false information put out here that, you know, needs to be addressed by the board at our next meeting, so. And it was about the reentry center and every reopening. I mean, we, we have voted several times that, uh, the juvenile program will reopen. It's just, you know, we need to get the dust settled, we got a new director and he's doing a wonderful job and, uh, you know, we will have a juvenile detention. It's just going to take a little time.
What is that, uh, article?
This was from.
My grandpa Carol last two days.
April twenty eighth. No, I didn't either. It was brought to my attention just today, so. That's about all I have unless Ed has any more comments on the Land Enforcement Center. I mean. We expect some quotes on fixing some ceilings within the jail this month's eve and, uh, wanted to see where they come in that. And that's where that's at, like Martin said, the juvenile. We got to address that, we don't know about it and evidently by the article, I guess the city's in favor of some type of juvenile detention center now and, so, um, I think to put it bluntly, the community, I think you're going to, you know, probably say it, but I think your juveniles have been let go instead of picking them up just to the fact that they don't want to haul them around for us, so.
I looked at the numbers of transfers for juveniles in the last three months. Everybody in this five county area is being very, very good. There is nobody getting transferred. There's a couple, but nothing is like we had before that center, before the juvenile center called. So, the answer is just to let kids go like it's.
Social Services, twenty-two oh six, big deal for this county. My vision with anchor director, she did, uh, for down there numerous days. Did a wonderful job, I think, and agreed to help to have her face in front of the legislators and showing our concern and, uh, I don't, I'm sure glad she volunteered to go on that meeting. Pretty out of time. I guess it's supposed to be daytime, right? She did a very good job and I will thank her personally and at our next meeting, if Social Services will be.
She had a child welfare meeting in Bismarck today. I asked her to come today, but she wasn't able to.
Okay. Other than that, I guess I'm left to date. Nothing else with the Land Enforcement Center?
Nope.
I mean, we were going to have a meeting and like you said, we were discussing things. I just thought it was kind of a falsehood that, you know, there's a line there where it codes, you know, it was, it was closed and it would probably never reopen, well.